Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Erwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeff Free. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us and for our city, Lord, and for all of our citizens. Lord, we just pray for a successful and quick vaccine to COVID. We pray for those who have been affected by the pandemic, Lord, for those who are sick, for those who have lost jobs. We pray that they have quick resolutions, Lord. And Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Erwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Phyllis, do you have an announcement?
Yes, sir. Bossier City Council meetings will still be streamed live at our website, http:bossiercity.org, under the City Council section, and suddenly link channel 12. In accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet the quorum requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. Under Phase Two of the Governor's reopening plan, we are allowed 50% capacity. Unfortunately, since we still must meet social distancing guidelines, the City Council chambers will remain at 25% capacity, or 52 individuals. All individuals attending the City Council meetings in person will be required to have their temperatures taken and mask on before entering. Masks must remain on the entire time here in the chambers unless you are addressing the council. In accordance with Section 4B6 of the Proclamation Number 89, JBE 2020, any individual giving a speech for broadcast or to an audience, if anyone is uncomfortable in coming to the meeting, they can email their comments to the city clerk@bossiercity.org prior to the meeting, and those comments will be read into the record. We will also set aside some time at the very beginning of the council meeting to allow for public comment on any agenda item in accordance with the recently passed Act 302. You may call 318-549-4595 at this time for the comment period of the meeting to make your comments, and you will be placed on speakerphone. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted City Council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session, and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please know foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit your right to speak.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis.
Want to set a one-minute clock, Mr. Montgomery?
What?
You want to set a clock for public comment?
Yes. How long?
One minute.
All right. For those that are attending the meeting virtually, is that the correct term?
Mm-hmm.
We would open up for any comments at this point on any item on the agenda today. And the ti- oh, we've already started the time. So... We do need to have some music.
I know. I got some. You want me to play it?
Yeah.
You like AC/DC?
Yes, sir. Reminds me of 1980 at LSU, my freshman year.
Which one you like? I got a couple albums on there.
By the time you get that queued up, we'll be done.
I would suggest Led Zeppelin as the background music.
We've had no public comments, sir.
All right. Need to approve the amendments from the August 4th, 2020 regular meeting, in dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. No additions. We need to approve the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda?
Second.
Questions from the audience?
A snake under there?
Well, there's something hanging that's hitting my feet.
It easily attached under the thing here.
They might have gotten knocked down.
Do you think we could get them to attach those things?
Yes, sir. Mr. Zagone?
Did we, uh...
We have a motion by-
Did I ask the audience for comment?
Not yet.
Okay. Comment from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right. We have a guest today, Ms. Lynn Bryan, Executive Director of Keep Bossier Beautiful.
Ms. Bryan, look, clicker is under the cabinet there. You may have to turn it on.
Look at her. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are y'all today?
Good. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I am glad to be here to share with you the work of Keep Bossier Beautiful today. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to share with you a little bit about where we're going, where we are now, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. But it's only going to be the highlights, so don't worry. Where we are now. We have a tool to guide our work. It's a Community Appearance Index, which is an assessment tool used by all Keep America Beautiful affiliates to assure we measure litter using the same index. It uses a random statistical sample of sites located throughout the parish. It measures litter using a one-to-four index, with four being the worst case. This year in Bossier Parish, our litter index was 1.8. With four being the worst, Bossier Parish has some room to make some improvements. I have a couple of maps here that'll show you the City Council districts. In those districts, we had our litter index rate of 1.4 and 1.5. And I have a full copy of the report that I've given Phyllis for you to have. Our goal for 2021 is to get the index litter rate for the parish down overall to 1.5. And here's a look at some of our volunteers who help us with this project. With this information, we can now plan our activities and our goals, because we do hope to be data-driven. We submitted two grants. One we received was from Keep Louisiana Beautiful for cigarette but- cigarette butt litter prevention. There are 41 Keep America Beautiful affiliates in the state of Louisiana. They received 38 letters of request. They invited 16 to submit a grant, and KBB was one of seven that they selected to award this year. And I'll tell you the specifics about that in a few minutes. We're also in the process of cleaning up and redoing our bylaws. Keep Bossier Beautiful will be 35 years old this December. Our bylaws have been reformatted since that time, but they needed it again. So we went back to our original charter. We requested bylaws from other Keep America Beautiful affiliates. We took their best practices. We consulted with Keep America Beautiful and Keep Louisiana Beautiful, and we created a document that we believe will be extremely helpful to us. It's in final review now by our legal team. We've also created financial procedures, job descriptions, so everybody will know what to do and how we're going to do business. Our board members have already signed off on an annual agreement to follow our code of ethics, our conflict of interest policy, and our whistleblower policy. This is our second year to participate in the Give for Good campaign, and we're very excited, because our donations were up 175% from last year. Woo-hoo! And we've done some fun things, too. We have trimmed trees. We planted trees. We freed trees. We've picked up litter and a bunch of it, 8,000 pounds. We've hosted events, and we've partnered with others for events. And we are working on our gateways for beautification projects. And a few weeks ago, we were awarded the Keep America Beautiful President Circle Recognition Award, which also came with a $500 check. Now, a little bit about where we're going. Our mission falls within the Keep America Beautiful mission to end litter, improve recycling, and beautify our communities. Our strategic planning team will meet the second week of August, and we'll begin discussions of what we plan to do over the next year. We want to host an event. We've already started, and we want to host an event that will benefit all of the residents of our community. We want to host an e-waste event. We're dealing with a company from Baton Rouge, and we'll offer residents the opportunity to safely discard their electronics for recycle purposes. If it goes well, we could offer it a couple of times a year. Everyone has old phones, PCs, and electronic gadgets that are outdated and non-working. In September, we will begin our cigarette butt litter prevention project. This picture was taken on the I-20 exit ramp coming onto Airline Drive. Cigarette butt is the- cigarette butt litter is our nation's number-one litter problem, and it's believed to be the number-one litter problem in the world. And it is playing havoc on our streams, rivers, and ocean life. Thomas Nobity, founder of the Cigarette Butt Pollution Project, is noted to say, "People are more likely to pick up their dog poop than their cigarette butts." And I believe him. Our project will consist of a digital media blitz and a distribution of 500 pocket ashtrays at local retailers. We'll conduct pre- and post-cleanups to determine the effectiveness of the project. And yes, we will be shoveling, and we will be counting cigarette butts. These images are pending approval, but you can see what we're planning to market. Another project we love to do is to get into the schools. We love to teach reducing, reusing, and recycling. Last year, we won seven schools. And now, we're trying to figure out creative ways to continue the messaging during this pandemic. Does this look familiar? I think there's a flyer in one of your elevators. We've started our first Saturday cleanups back up again, and we're working out the details on how to keep our groups small. Keep Louisiana Beautiful has canceled the Great American Cleanup for 2020 and 2021, but they've offered us some suggestions on how we can keep the program going. They suggested a program using small two bags with items needed for groups to do cleanups in partnerships with our local libraries. Another project we'll be discussing is to plant a tree for every COVID-19 death in our parish. Something new we'll be looking at is the possibility of adding litter baskets to some of our bus stop benches. As you can tell from this picture in front of Sonic on Airline Drive, at least we know folks will put their litter in something. If it's not a trash can, it could be your shopping buggy. Other potential projects that we'll focus on will be to expand our Green Christmas Yard Award to include best-looking yards from homeowners and businesses in partnership with Bossier Press Tribune. We are in early conversations with residents and friends of Barstool Annex, working toward a beautification project. And we're also planning to partner with Stonewall Baptist Church on Texas Street and their community garden project. Now, how will we get there? We will continue to collaborate. We believe we are better together. We'll seek out grant opportunities, volunteers, and partners, and we'll work to raise resources needed to fund these projects. Our upcoming fundraiser is right here in partnership with the city, at the city municipal complex, and I think it's going to be called Never Forget. We'll offer individuals the opportunity to honor those they care about with a personalized brick that will be permanently placed in the Liberty Garden. Bricks will sell for $100 each, and proceeds from sales will support the mission of Keep Bossier Beautiful. Now, on behalf of the Keep Bossier Beautiful Board of Directors, volunteers, and partners, and myself, we'd like to say thank you. We're proud to partner with you as we work to develop a more green and more beautiful parish, enhancing the quality of life for our residents, and creating economic development stimulus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and Pam, and City Council members.
Oh, thank you, Lynn, very much. Ms. Fernandez?
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial reports for the month ending July 2020. On page one, you can see that revenue is 108% to budget, and the portion of sales tax collected that deals directly with the general fund is at 104%. Page two, our expenses are at 92%. Page three is our sales tax, and year-to-date, we're half a percent better than prior year. If we back out the $2 million in audit collections, we'd be down 7%. Page four is our manning. We're at 675, which is up one from last month, but 23 less than budget. Finally, page five is our water and sewer report. For the month, we're at 95%. Year-to-date, we're at 130% to budget. We're at 141%, and rolling 12 months, we're at 105%. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
I noticed on the- that latest report that you sent for the debt coverage ratio-
Yes, sir.
That's awesome.
And- and I both have worked hard to get it.
For those that are- what we're talking about is the debt coverage ratio should be 1.20, and they've worked tirelessly to get that up to 1.22. So, again, thank you all very much, especially given the fact of the economic conditions out there and the fact that we're selling less water. And for us to still maintain that debt coverage ratio in excess of 1.2 speaks a lot to both the administration, Stacy, as well as Man Shack and the employees of the Water and Sewer Department. So, thank you all. Mr. Roshnback?
Good afternoon, council. This is my first monthly update for engineering projects for Bossier City.
Is it on, Ben? Side, other side. It was working, aren't we?
Sergeant.
I'll try and see if it works.
Here we go. Okay, just a quick general overview. Some of these statistics surprise me. I hope they surprise you. Currently, there's over $153 million worth of projects that are being administered through the engineering department that are either in design or under construction. Over $81 million in construction currently. We've got nine projects in design or bid phase, 23 projects under construction, and seven subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase. So, tons of activity. Can you press a button over there?
I can. I don't know what's going on with it. It was just working.
First project here, trying to include a little picture of some of the activity we've got going on, is the Carriage Way, the first phase of the Carriage Way. So, original contract amount was almost $11 million. Best yet is the contractor on that project. Currently, we're sitting around $11 million five, with November 1st as the completion date, as we stand here today. There was a change order back in June for a little over $400,000 and 121 calendar days. And as y'all are aware, not too long ago, y'all approved another change order to plus that project up. I'm showing it 68 days behind, even with the 121 days added to it. Of course, you know, it's finally decided to dry up, and if you've been that way, you can tell there's been a lot of activity. It's starting to shape up. So, I'm pressing and hoping they'll improve upon that. That's going to be a recurring theme on all these projects as we go through. You're going to notice that, you know, COVID and weather have hampered getting those projects completed. Just a quick update on the Carriage Way, the Phase Two. Justin was here a couple of weeks back and updated y'all. But some good news, the railroad has approved our proposed plan. They did that back on the 11th. The utility relocation coordination efforts continue. That's multiple contacts all day long on that that we're working on, working with the core and DOTD on permit approvals. And then also, we have the Citizens Bank Drive. Actually, the plans for that, both the first phase of Citizens Bank Drive and the Brigham Dental Parking Lot, those plans are complete, and we'll be looking to get those projects out and under construction at the appropriate time.
Ben, on that Phase Two, I want to compliment, and what was his name, Jimmy Drew Tessier?
Yeah.
With the Railroad UP, along with Justin Haydel and Man Shack and Ben and all the people that were involved. I mean, he says that so quickly that railroad approval is done. I'm telling you, that is monumental. I think Mr. Larkin can attest to. And it- that was a feat in of itself. So, I just want to point out to everyone the value that Man Shack has brought to the table and the ability to get these things done in a very efficient manner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. A lot of work, a lot of energy every day is poured out on all of these projects, but that one has a lot of moving pieces. Swan Lake Road, December 2020 is the anticipated completion date on that. It's tough for me to get a handle on the days, because it's a DOTD project, and they go by working days and not calendar days. So, you know, I would say 112 days ahead is because they haven't had a lot of working days out there that they can charge because of all the weather. That being said, we're showing them at around 80% complete. About 61% of the time has elapsed. And, you know, if you traverse that area, you can tell they're making good progress out there. Innovation Drive, Phase Two, original contract on that was $10,205. Current contract amount with change order that was recently approved is $10,505. Most of that had to do with the electrical lighting that we're going to be putting down, innovation. There was a couple little odds and ends there that we also included. What you see there is the new pump station off to your right. Paving is expected potentially to be done this week. You can kind of see the little U-shaped rebar there on the edges of pavement. They'll be working on the curb sections over the next week or two, and this project will start shaping up. So, they're a little ahead, 13 days ahead. I think they were one of the contractors that asked for the fewest amount of days, about 70-some-odd days, and they're moving. They're making good progress. Coleman Street, bids opened on that on the 12th, just shy of $2.1 million. Actually got some information hot off the press right before lunch, where DOTD is reviewing that. The low bid was specialty trackhoe. They're the ones doing Innovation Drive, so we're excited about that. That's the current way it looks out there. Think it'll-
Ben, what- the building, do we own that building?
It's my understanding that the yellow building is owned by Bossier, but I- it's not. Who owns that? Oh, the hospital owns it now. I guess we used to-
The yellow building? So, it's going to be torn down? It needs to be.
Yeah.
Is that looking west?
We are looking east.
We're looking east.
So, we're towards the end, getting close to Traffic Street, looking east. So, that's the new parking lot there to your right, and Hamilton Road would be way down there in the distance, and Bossier High School is off to your left. Next slide, please. Okay, ART Parkway lighting, project is complete. They hit it a little ahead of schedule, did a good job. Current contract amount closed out, $162,088.43. And if you've been down there, you know it's a dramatic improvement over what it was. So, that project's over. Next slide, please. This is a license plate reader camera project. Finally, got permits back from DOTD. We still have a few outliers, but those are over for their review. That work will begin in earnest next week. I've got 18 cameras at nine different locations throughout the city. Max Bayou, this project just started. Current completion date is December 15th of this year. Yorwick was a low bidder on that, and they're- they've mobilized. They're starting to work on that as we speak, and you can tell it's in dire need of improvement. Public Works Generator Project is coming to a close. I'm showing them behind here at 44% complete, with 64% time elapsed. They still think the only real remaining work they have is to get the animal control generator wired up, and that won't be ready probably for another three or four weeks. So, they'll need a little bit more time, but the bulk of their work is done. Animal Control Facility, looks a little different. They started raising steel earlier this week, so it's starting to take shape. We added 125 days due to COVID and rain and everything else. Original contract amount, 1.3 million. They're currently sitting at just shy of 1.4 million with a completion date set for January 17th. They're still a little behind schedule, but I think it's going to start taking shape and picking up now that we've got some decent weather to capitalize on. Tinsley Athletic Ball Fields, that's over close to Animal Control, and another project that's just been hammered by- And another project that's just been hammered by weather and things of that nature. Current contract amount, we're sitting at just twelve million six hundred and some odd thousand dollars there. And they're starting to make a lot of progress out there on that construction site because it's drying up finally. Really, there's a lot of, believe it or not, a ton of subsurface work that goes on to get those fields into the playing condition that we've got specified out there. And so, there's a lot of money going in the ground that you won't see and to make all that work, we've got to have the right conditions there. So, got a long way to go on that project. Two concession and restroom facilities, Meadowview and Tinsley. Meadowview is complete, Tinsley is getting close. I'm showing that to be seventy-six plus percent complete and that was at the end of July. They're a few days behind, but again, that's just using the amount that they've invoiced versus the total contract amount. So, you can tell just by that picture, they're getting close to being done on that project. Sports Field Lighting, I hope this is the last slide you'll see on this. This project's been complete, less moving or taking down the old structures. They started doing that midweek last week. They just, Parks and Rec did not want them getting out on the field until it had been dry enough to prevent rutting the field. So, this one is done and I think they're just about done taking the poles down, so we'll close the books on this one. East Bank Restrooms, sixty-two percent complete, sixty-eight percent time elapsed on that. They're humping along pretty good. If you've been down there, you can tell they're getting close to being complete.
Hey, Mike, could you, do you mind? I wanted to ask him real quick. You designed this, right?
Yes, sir.
What is the...
Go back one. I have to go back one, I'm sorry.
Anyway, what I was going to ask you, what is the finish going to be? I noticed halfway up like a Wayne's Coats, that rock, what's the next?
It's that, that is the finish of it.
The center blocks?
Yeah, it's a ground face, so it's got a little nicer look than just a regular gray concrete block.
But... Or have you seen it? I mean, are they going to be able to get the dirt off the stands?
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's going to have to be thoroughly cleaned when it's all said and done, but it's been...
But I mean, do we need to seal it so that doesn't happen again or...
Well, I'd hope after we're done with construction and it hadn't been sitting in the red dirt that's around from the beginning, it should all clean up. And if it doesn't, we're going to make it right.
Yeah, I was just asking.
Should clean up and look good when it's all said and done.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Field of Dreams Restroom, they're coming along good out there. I'd say they're on schedule. About a six-hundred thousand dollar project. Still got a lot of parking lot and other things to do out there, but you're starting to see some activity. And I don't know if you've seen, but the community is, they're loving that park. So, this is going to be a much, I suspect, a very used facility. Jogging Trail, y'all approved an ordinance here not that long ago. Contractor actually mobilized this week. They'll start demoing tomorrow to get those... That's just a small snippet of some of the mess out there that we'll be correcting over the next few weeks. Mike Woods Park Drainage Improvements, a little project we did for Parks and Rec. You can kind of see, just so happened, we were out there when it started to rain. We got a few contractors to put some pricing together, got great prices, a little less than thirty-five thousand. And they had budgeted seventy-five thousand to get that problem resolved. Frankly, it's flat as a flitter out there. If you've ever been, there's not a whole lot of places to take the water. Our objective is to at least get what's out there in the ground and in pipe and out to kind of an old farm ditch that exists out there. So, glad to get that one under construction. I know Parks and Rec is as well. Carriage Oaks Drainage Improvements, this is a seventy-two inch corrugated metal pipe going underneath Hickory Ridge. And they just recently restored that pipe and now we've got to do some work above grade. But just wanted to give you all some shots on that, kind of interesting. Private Development, these are the seven subdivisions that we've got. St. Charles Court, Cane's Landing, Willow Lake, Golden Meadows, Waterford Bend, Redwood Place and the Enclave. So, a lot of work about to be under construction with all those developments. Projects out to bid are in design. Melrose Drive Extension, we have bid opening set for September twenty-second. Highway Seventy-One Lighting, Phase Two, that's in design right now. East Bank Fire Station's in design. The Burn Building, construction's pending, albeit it may... Mike could probably give you a better idea. I think they are getting close to erecting that. Highway Seventy-One Streetscape Improvements, we have a bid opening set for September twenty-second. A bunch of miscellaneous capital improvements in South Bojor, those are in design now. Public Service Commission Lighting Projects, there's three of those. One at Century Link, one at the police and then one for Public Works. Bid opening on those is September first. Got a little seat repair project at Century Link that's under construction. And then the Women's Veterans Memorial that's in design with a to-be-complete-complete-by-November-eleventh date. Just some honorable mentions because you haven't heard me yak on enough. Flood Management, we attended the Flood Technical Committee Meeting. Got a lot of data that's under review. We also attended the Region One Regional Steering Committee Meeting. They're in the initial phases of study and that's studying the Red River and that basin specifically. We also attended...
Could we please silence our phones?
Sorry about that.
Excuse us, Mr. Oshinback.
We also attended the Corpse Workshop on Louisiana Lakes Inundation Maps for Emergency Planning, which was pretty interesting. We got a follow-up meeting with Ian Snellgrove and Levy Board and Bojor Parish on the twenty-seventh to kind of delve a little deeper in those emergency planning tools that are available to us. Traffic Engineering, we got an interim signage restoration and maintenance plan. We completed the budgets. Roadway and lighting restorations, ninety-plus percent complete. Got a meeting set next Monday with the Traffic Signaling Specialist to begin looking at the problems up and down Benton Road and Airline and other places to see if we can't get the timing to not be so idiotic as you traverse those areas. Property Standards, I just put responded to numerous complaints. It's probably in the last five weeks, a thousand complaints. And we're also working on a tire removal program, trying to get some legs on that and get that done. Any questions?
Very comprehensive report.
Thank you, Ben, for jumping in.
How you do it all, including the water in the sewers?
How we're getting there. This was, now we got the template, so hopefully you'll get something as good every month on this.
Ben, I want to thank you. I had a request for the gazebo's to be power washed and painted on the riverfront and it looks like that was done. Mayor, I don't know if you had something to do with that or...
We, I didn't. I can't take credit for that. That wasn't...
Oh, they... Someone went out there and...
Waterway Commission did it, yeah.
At the mayor's request. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ben. Before we get started on unfinished business, I would like to take the opportunity on behalf of the council to thank the voters of Bojor City for passing the millage renewal overwhelmingly, sixty-eight percent to thirty-two percent. And I think that speaks to the efficiency of our government, the belief that we're running things like a business. I want to thank the administration, the mayor, all of the people that put this together, especially the two chiefs, Chief Sagon and Chief McWilliams. I will say on myself, and I think I speak for the council as well, that amidst all this turmoil in our country today and people saying we're defunding, I want the people of Bojor City to know that we're funding our police and fire department and we will continue to support them because they in turn support our community. And that's what makes us so successful. Our men and women in the police and fire department, they don't have to go to work wordy on whether they're going to get paid or not because we've taken the necessary steps to ensure conservative fiscal budgeting of the taxpayers' money within this city. I can't speak enough to the people of Bojor City and the support and then the return support from the police and fire to our community. So, I want to stand up and thank you all. Those unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance appropriating sixty-six thousand dollars from the Walter OBB Carriage Way Fund to hire Purtle and Associates LC to design lighting for the Walter OBB Carriage Way Road portion and authorize the Mayor Lewin's Walker to execute the attached here-to. Final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to fund drainage improvements around the Clear Wells at the Water Treatment Plant at a cost of fifty thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Axis Construction for completion of work. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby? Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to fund improvements to the Alligator Bayou Pump Station at a cost of ninety thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to reappropriate forty thousand dollars from the Public Service Complex Generator Project and fifteen thousand dollars from the Public Works Operating Fund to the Bojor Animal Control Building Project with funds for both projects less the Public Works Operating Fund being in the 2020 Sales Tax Capital Fund. Final reading.
Shall move.
Got it first and second?
Yes, sir.
All right. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to rescind ordinance number eighty-nine of 2019. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds for the construction cost of the sewer sub-basin BC-20 rehabilitation project for a total of four hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and two dollars and ninety-five cents to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading.
Shall move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to rescind ordinance number eighty-two of 2015.
Shall move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating four hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars as the required match for the state of Louisiana's facility and planning capital outlay funding for the Highway Seventy-One Street Lighting Project Phase Two and authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the design and construction services to the city of said project. Final reading.
Second. Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New Business. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement to repair and replace the thirty-six inch water main located at the Water Treatment Plant Number Three at a cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. First and final reading.
Shall move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement to repair sewer main located at Thirty-Six Twenty-Five East Texas Street at a cost of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Lawler Construction for completion of work. First and final reading.
Shall move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement to repair sewer main located at Twelve-O-Three Violet Avenue at a cost of eighteen thousand dollars to come from Sewer Capital Contingency Fund and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Yorwick Construction, Inc. for completion of work. First and final reading.
Second. Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to conduct repairs to the Airline Drive and Murphy Street Gravity Main at a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
Shall move. Second.
Questions from the audience?
Ben, that is right there with a, we talked about it numerous times. Thank you.
Questions from the council?
Oh, no, no more. I'll play an audience, okay?
Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-two of 2020 increasing the appropriated amount of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand eighty dollars to match the final application using Sewer Capital and Contingency Funds. First reading.
Shall move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Bobby, you have a question?
I'm on the council.
No question.
You said you were in the audience.
Yeah, I was.
You switched. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bojor City a surplus to the city's need and provide for donation to the city of Boyce Police Department in accordance with law. First reading.
Second. Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to come from the 2017 LCDA bond to be used for the landscaping project for the Century Link Center. First reading.
Second. Second.
Stacy? What would be wrong if we took that from the hotel motel tax?
We can. I was just taking it from the Capital Projects Bond that we did specifically for Century Link.
But I mean, really, in that, according to Rebecca, that's maintenance on the trees and all that. I don't think we need to be spending bond money on maintenance. I mean, that's just my, I'm telling you my thoughts.
We'll change it.
I would rather take that from hotel motel tax and utilize the bond money for assets that might, that will match the debt period closer than this will.
Yes, sir. We'll change it.
Thank you.
Good thought, Mr. Montgomery.
Sir?
It's a good thought. Those were twenty years. Those lasted, that's all on those trees, so...
Mr. Williams, did you do something to knock yourself off?
Probably. I shot me and stuff in the head, but no, I'm still on.
Everybody just got knocked off.
What's this?
Make revisions to this then.
We'll have to do voice votes. Everyone just got knocked off.
Okay.
So, we'll go to voice votes for the...
All right, so do we need to...
We have a motion by Mr. Irwin and a second by Mr. Larkin for this. But we need a motion to amend it to the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to come from there instead.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, or, I'm sorry.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Right.
Motion carries unanimously.
And then a motion to reintroduce.
I make that motion, we, we, we reintroduce that ordinance as amended.
And I'll second that.
Questions from the audience? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No? Unanimous? All right.
Motion carries. And then it looks like we're back online. Everybody's back online, so we'll go to number eight. Um, introduce an ordinance requiring a face covering over the nose and mouth when inside the Bossier City Council Chamber. First reading. Motion dies for a lack of a, I mean, vote, uh, item dies for a lack of a motion.
All right. Thank you.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one emergency medical services supervisor to replace a position due to retirement. First and final reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
It, it kicked me off again, so...
Yeah, it's, I'm still on number seven.
And it's, it's not us. It's going to be with the company, so...
Wow.
Yes, sir. Um, so a voice vote. I have a motion by Mr. Free and a second by Mr. Harvey.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
All right, number 10. Adopt a resolution to fill a Labor One position in the Solid Waste Division. First and final reading.
Don't move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a Counts Clerk Three for the Sales Tax Department. First and final reading.
Semi. Second.
Questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a foreman for public utilities. First and final reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an application analyst for the Information Services Department. First and final reading.
Semi.
Second.
Questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Approve Report of Change Order Number Two for the Parks and Sports Fields Lighting Improvements with an Increase of 280 Calendar Days.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have.
Mayor, do you have anything? All right. Everyone, have a great week. Thanks for coming. We'll see you soon.